Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, before we go to our consent agenda, we're going to pull out the Fairfield-October Society Park Use Permit. We're going to have a report in our public appearances. And are there any other items to add or subtract to our agenda? Now, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes for the September 9th council meeting, approval of the August 23rd payroll of $142,894.39, approval of USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $12,975, approval of the Co-Bank interim financing debt in the amount of $47,327.62, approval of your August finance report, a resolution of employment for the police department. We have three new officers that we're swearing in in a couple of weeks, and that are Brian Burnett, Jonathan Scott, and Tyler Anderson. A resolution of employment for Park and Rec Department, we have acceptance of the Wayfinding Commission minutes, acceptance of the Library Board minutes, acceptance of the beautification minutes. We have approval of claims in the amount of $655,398.54, of which PKG contracting amount is $249,837.22. Any questions, counsel, regarding those consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not. Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to our public appearances. Counsel, at our last meeting, we had a presentation from the Mandarinos regarding an organization in Fairfield to foster harmony and political respect and dialogue, The Better Angels, which is a national grassroots organization strives to depolarize America by offering workshops across the nation which uphold principles of respect, courteousness, political interaction, and will teach practical skills in accomplishing this kind of political interaction. So, I have a proclamation basically dedicating the support of the city to the Fairfield branch of Better Angels organization and their endeavors to help teach these skills and principles in our community. So, if you guys will come up and receive the proclamation. So, entertain a motion, counsel, to support the resolution.
To move.
Or the proclamation.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And now, Francesca, if you could give us an update on the Fairfield-October Society Park Use?
So, hello. Happy fall, first day of fall for those of you who are jazzed about that. So, we reconvened as a committee, and we sort of discussed the different feelings that you had expressed to us and concerns about the music in the park. So, just to reiterate, if you don't remember, we will, are planning to play Halloween music, and I say Halloween music in the sense of 1950s Monster Mash, Louis Armstrong type of thing, very friendly, very jazzy, not so spooky scary. And so, the hours that we are proposing are from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The playlist that we have and have discussed with Steve up to this point is about two hours and 30 minutes. So, you'll only hear during those hours each song about five times per day, so not getting too repetitive with anything there. And based on the comments that we discussed last time, we are totally game to do the one week leading up to Halloween. So, if there's any other questions or concerns that you guys have, you know, feel free to throw them at me.
Okay, great. So, just for everyone else, your original request was to do it for the month of October?
Yes.
Okay. And we just thought that that might be a little bit too much for neighbors and different things.
Right. Our main thing was just to try and make it cost-effective for the permit.
Sure. Okay. So, counsel, the modified request then is for the seven days prior to Halloween?
Which falls on the Thursday.
Which would be the 24th through the 31st.
Yeah.
We'll move to approve that.
Okay. Moved by Hallie to approve the request.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other discussion? Not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Counsel, now we'll move to our action items and ordinances. The first, we have a couple of projects that are coming to us as final, large projects, and they both involve the Step 1 wastewater project. So, if, I think Steve Hauser's here from French Reniker. Steve, you could...
Good evening. So, the first project on the list is post-sanitary sewer conveyance improvement, Step 1. This project was contracted to SM Henches &amp; Sons of Golden, Minnesota, and we're here to declare that that project has been completed in substantial performance with the drawings and the specifications.
Do you remind us the area that that covered? Oh, that was the east side of our...
In gen-- yeah, in general, that was from Lamson Woods south to the wastewater treatment line.
Correct. Counsel, any questions regarding the recommendation to accept the project as final? Not entertain a motion to accept Step 1 project as final.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, Steve. And then, we have an addition to the Step 1?
Yeah. So, this project started where Heniges Project left off near Lamson Woods and headed northwest across the golf course and several hundred feet west of D Street. That project was contracted to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, and it too has been completed in substantial performance with the drawings and specifications.
Thank you. And I know we've had some dangling issues there, but everything has been completed?
Yes. It all pulled together as of last week.
Okay. Counsel, any questions regarding the acceptance of the addition of Step 1?
Are we releasing retainage as soon as we vote on this?
No.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're recommending you hold, as per Iowa code, you hold the retainage for 30 days past today.
30 days. Okay.
Make sure all claims and everything have been paid, and there aren't any claims on file.
Okay.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Next, counsel, we have completed our work for City Hall, the ADA compliance project. And Melanie, if you could tell us how we've done on that project?
All right. So, the motion for you tonight is to declare the project as substantially complete. This starts the one-year warranty period, but more importantly, what it allows us to do is to process all of the final bills and get them all turned into USDA before our end-of-September deadline. The total construction cost for the project ended up being $209,826.21. By the time you added in engineering and the asbestos testing, we were looking at around $265,000. So, we have used all of the grant funds, which was the purpose of doing this project. I think by the time we closed out the other two projects and closed this out, we used, we were only like $30,000 over budget. So, considering it was $7 million, we're really, really happy with that. So, we used all of the grant and not much extra.
Terrific.
There are still punch list items on the City Hall project. It's in your agenda, the substantially completion, complete, like I said. It just allows us to process payment. But to Katie's question on the retainage, we'll hold the retainage until the project is finally complete. Like I said, this just allows us to process those payment and turn them into...
What are some of the things on your punch list?
Um, there's some pay, a lot of small items, like touching up the paint. There's some grout that needs to be touched up. But the major items are, we will be reporing the curb ramp, not the ramp itself into City Hall, but the curb ramp onto the street. And that's a little bit delayed because contractors are very, very busy this, right now. And then, the other major item is the card access systems. The back door and the employee entrance in the front will have card access rather than the keys that were currently used. So, you all have to find your keys to turn them back in here very soon. But those are probably the two largest items. And again, we're processing those payments, but we're holding the check until that work is complete.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Melanie? If not, on that recommendation, I entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of the project as substantially complete.
Still moved.
Moved by Toohill, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign.
Mel, I have one quick question. All these items that you have on us at the bottom, where we have images to go with them, how long do they have to complete those?
USDA says that they'll be looking at the project around the first of November. So, they contract, yeah, they have months to do the work. But they don't get paid until they do the work regardless of when USDA comes up.
Okay. Thank you, Mel. Next, counsel, we have our annual 2019 City Street Financial Report for your approval. And I'll ask Rebecca at this time if she can go over the numbers for us.
Sure. Basically, the state makes us do a report on how we spent it. There's very little area where you can put everything into, so it's very much magnified into mainly roadway maintenance, but that's where most of it has gone to. So, basically, it's just a report showing our expenditures and our revenues, and we must do it to receive it again.
Okay. Any questions, counsel, regarding the report? Not entertain a motion to approve the 2019 City Street Financial Report?
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, we have three easements that are going to be amended, and I'll ask our city attorney. Is John here? I thought I saw him. There he is. I'm looking back. John's in the front row.
I got a front seat.
All right. Good.
These are going to look pretty much like 70 others you've already dealt with. What we did is, and I may have to have Melanie explain what we're going to have left, but there was a decision to make adjustments on the easements, a couple of them on the south side of Libertyville Road, where Huffman's Estates is concerned, and where there was an, I want to call it, an assignment of the interest of Bob Burns' property to the Simons. And what we're going to end up with is different-looking easements that we're retaining a part of at the same time that we're coming up with new pieces of easement. The description that you have attached to each of these resolutions, as far as those two properties, essentially have the correct description right now. But we're going to be coming back to you, and I think with each of these resolutions, you'll see at the back end, there's something called draft resolution to abandon and vacate and transfer. What we'll be doing is coming back, and we're exchanging with the property owners the easement we need, giving them back the part of the easement we already acquired in exchange for that. And they're agreeable to that essentially, except for a little spot, about $150 of money on one of these. So, essentially, you're also going to see that there is an easement exchange on the third of these resolutions, which has to do with what we call a tenant agreement, and that is the Burns', even though they assigned their permanent easement rights to the Simons in a real estate sale, they still have property south of that, and that's going to amount to a different description. So, what you're going to get back from us probably a meeting or two from now is another resolution to vacate the former acquired easement tract's remainders. If that makes sense to you, we're going to give back what we don't need. That's what we're supposed to do under 6B for eminent domain. And all of these were required previously under the understanding that they'd be treated as eminent domain acquisitions. So, the first one of these, if that makes sense, or if you have any questions, if it didn't make sense, please ask me, because I'll try to spend a little more time talking about it. But the first one, which is Chris and Carrie Simons Wheeler, assignees of Robert and Jennifer Burns. The third page, as far as what we're resolving to do, explains that in addition to there being a determination that the previously acquired easement should be amended, and then there's an attached easement sketch of the amendment, down in the "Be it resolved" at the bottom, there is a discussion of a multitude of things that we've agreed in the purchase agreement to do that aren't cash payments, but there are other things, relocating fence, doing some things with, well, the...
Feeding three horses.
Exactly. We're buying hay.
Yeah.
And so forth. But if you go through that whole laundry list of things in the "Be it resolved" paragraph at the bottom, that is reflected in attachments following it, which are an easement and a purchase agreement. And the back page of the purchase agreement before the signature page, starting at about paragraph 14, takes you through things that were negotiated to make this exchange with the Simons. So, we're still, are we working on the descriptions for the remainders?
Sure.
Pop you on that out of the blue.
Yep.
That particular resolution, and we're not asking you to act on the draft resolution about the transfer back. I just want you to understand that that's part of this agreement. So, we'll be back with a formal resolution when we have a detailed description and another drawing. Okay? That's not what tonight's about. So, tonight, we're approving the amended, changed easement acquisition according to what is attached to your resolution. So, I'd ask for your consideration at this point.
Okay.
So, Simon's is the first one. And in addition to exchange of the land, we have $150 cash for the purchase of hay. Because of the new location of the sewer, the new easement is going through their pasture. The old easement did not, which is why they're being compensated this, with this revision.
Okay. Hey, counsel, any questions regarding this first revised easement? And that would be with Simmons. So, not entertain a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? Not. Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then, the next revised easement will be for the Huffman Estate. Is there anything in that that needs to be pointed out to counsel?
Well, again, the third page, the easement summarizes what we're doing. Basically, in paragraph 3 in the middle of the page, it talks about making an adjustment, amending the easement, destating .75 acres of permanent easement and .15 acres of temporary easement. And that is going to, as the resolution at the bottom of the page indicates, it's going to result in no money compensation, but there are going to be considerations as far as a transfer of the remainder portion. Also, there is going to be parts of the purchase agreement that benefit them with some advantages as far as hookup fees and other costs that are being waived. And then, there is specific reference to what we're going to be vacating and abandoning. We'll bring you back a similar resolution to what we talked about on Simons. So, again, is there anything else?
That's covered.
We covered that. But if you would, consider that at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the Huffman revised easement?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Right. And the third resolution is Robert and Jennifer Burns for another real estate interest that we get from them, which it has to do with what is called a tenant's interest relating to property south of the Huffman Estates. And this particular, excuse me, it's the Simons property itself of, this is summarized on the third page of the resolution, and the same intent, there was a prior agreement. It's going to be replaced with this agreement, and then, there's going to be some transfer back, again, of the remainder of the tract that will no longer be part of the easement. This, I expect, when we get to these draft examples that you have that come back to you as completed resolutions with attachment maps, we'll remind you that we did this and that these are actually forms of exchange that we've done, that there won't be any additional consideration going out at that time. And essentially, the consideration that's been worked out that you're approving at this time is these exchanges. So, hopefully, this makes sense to you, too, that we're just in the drawing for the easement sketch. We're keeping that part of what we need for the easement with some southern more easement also. So, beyond that, there isn't anything special about this, except that it'll be just like the other two.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any counsel, any other questions? Not entertain a motion to approve the acquisition along Libertyville Road for Burns, from Burns.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay. Thank you, John.
I'm going to stay here for Mr. Honored, your honor, to counsel.
Sure.
This next item that's coming up is a tax exemption that we don't have in our code right now, but we think it should be advantageous to the city to have it added. And Josh is here to explain a little more about it, too. But the idea would be, this is time-sensitive. There are things that have to go on as far as the exemption that also coincide with other things that we have to go back to. Like, there's a 2080 agency involved with the spec building. There's other parts of the code that tie to things that we need to get done by the end of the year, so forth. So, I'm going to suggest, and I think Josh is going to be requesting, if you would consider maybe passing it through to the second reading. You'll still have time for a public hearing on the third reading, besides anything that goes on today. But that will help stay within the time-sensitive concerns.
So, this will be, yeah, this is our first reading of the tax-exempt speculative shell building. So, Josh, if you would give us some background, and then, we'll open up a public hearing on it, and then, tell us what, why we're trying to hit a timeline.
Great. And it's not essential that we move, but it was just a request to see if that's possible.
Okay.
So, in 2000, August of 2016, a finalized 2080 agreement was formed between FIDA, the City of Fairfield, Jefferson County Board of Supervisors, Access Energy Cooperative, and Northeast Power, to come together to fund and oversee the development of the spec building being completed this month in the new industrial park, in the new industrial park. All of the partners worked together in the planning process. An important part of the financial modeling for this to make it successful was to utilize what the state authorizes, the Iowa Department of Revenue authorizes municipalities, to exempt property taxes for speculative buildings during its speculative phase. So, as long as the building is not leased or sold, it is considered in its speculative phase, which makes these projects financially successful. And what I mean by financially successful is to basically to sell the building for cost, and as a result, we get an expanded tax base and job creation. So, the goal with the building is to see 20 to 25 jobs created. And we're not absolutely glued to that, but as a group, we would like to see that come out of this, and for this building to kick off the new industrial park and attract other businesses there also. So, what you'd be considering tonight is something that the Iowa Department of Revenue, again, does authorize municipalities to adopt this ordinance that John and Wendy have drafted tonight. So, the exciting thing is the construction will be complete this month. So, we'll be letting the council know about the ribbon-cutting ceremony, hopefully, in late October. So, do you have any questions about the project or...
So, this building, if it had a tenant, would be eligible for three years of 100% of A. Correct? Assuming it's a commercial enterprise, right?
Depending on the tools that we used.
Right.
Yes, if they decided, if we decided not to use tax increment financing, but if they did use tax increment financing, you can't abate taxes and use tip at the same time. So, it depends on...
Depends on what they end up with.
Correct.
Yeah. But if someone were to just come off the street, lease it, they would likely come to the council for a rebate on their, on their taxes.
Correct.
Okay. So, I just, because this, again, this would be another step in really adding to the timeline before the city is recouping anything that would be coming out of the building.
Correct. Again, we, it's speculative. So, I think all the partners are interested in seeing this project successful. The city's interest is you'll have an expanded tax base, and the goal is to add more jobs. So, yes, it may be a little bit before it's on the tax rolls, but ideally, you'll have something on the rolls for 50 years. So...
I see Supervisor Hamilton here this evening. Welcome, Darren. Has this been before the county as well? Will they be asked the same thing?
So, I actually sent that email with this, an email with that same question. If the city adopts this, does it, does it speak for all the taxing bodies? We didn't get back to that yet today. So...
Okay. We'd like all our partners to abate the taxes, too. So, and I don't know whether you have the same authority that we do, but... Yeah.
So, this is something that's been discussed with this project.
Okay.
And the representative from the city has been in this, the city representative has changed during this project. Tom Thompson is on our committee now.
Right. Okay.
Darren Hamilton, previously, before he switched teams.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Josh. That's enough background. I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any public comment on the ordinance reading. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And counsel, any questions for Josh or for our city attorney regarding the step we would be taking here? Okay. If not, then I entertain a motion to approve it from the first to the second reading.
Per our city attorney's request, I'd propose moving it from the first to the third.
So, you'd have to suspend the rules to do that? So, if you want to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Okay.
To move this from the first to the third. Okay.
Yeah. Motion by Anderson to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay. Thank you. So, Katie, so then, I would, your next motion would be to pass from the first to the third, not through the final, which is something allowable.
Correct.
So, first to the third.
First to the third.
Okay. So, motion by Anderson to pass it from the first... So motion by Anderson to pass it from the first to the third reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Discussion? Now please call a roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. Okay. Next, counsel, we have the second reading of our small cell facilities wireless technology. This is the ordinance that basically sets standards for small cell antennas to be used in our right-of-way should there be interest in that. We did have a number of people from the public at our last meeting showing concerns about the placement of these antennas. There really hasn't been anything that's changed. We are still mostly restricted by state and federal regulations for this. So until that time comes, when there is a wireless company that's interested in using our right-of-way for that, there's probably little that we can do than to have something in place that we can refer to. So any feedback, counsel, that you've received on the ordinance since that last week? Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on the ordinance and ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for your motion to approve from the second or the third reading.
Still moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Discussion? Now please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Andy? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we'll move to our committee reports. Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
We met tonight at 6 o'clock, and we had two agenda items. The first was representatives of housing development on Walton Road. Their initial request was a speed limit reduction in that area of where their subdivision comes on to Walton Road. We discussed it further. Really what they're looking for is just that the traffic is traveling west on Walton Road. As it comes past where the trail crosses, which is the entrance to Walton, heading west, there's a rise where you can't see over the hill, and you can't see this driveway into the subdivision. And so rather than altering the speed, which may or may not fix what they're trying to do, plus you'd slow the speed all the way down to Pleasant Plain, we thought a sign that just warned drivers that there was a blind driveway, or, you know, just a basic heads-up, there's a turning traffic ahead type of sign just on the section traveling west. So we checked, and that section of the road, weren't sure, that section of the road is city jurisdiction, so we can go ahead and install that sign. John, should we bring this back more formal for the council for installing a basic sign? Or can we go ahead and take the vote tonight?
Well, I think you can do it tonight, but I guess, is there any feedback out in the neighborhood when you're looking at it?
Well, we have two representatives from the neighborhood.
Yeah, I would recommend you bring it back.
Yeah, just a little more formal, because we didn't decide exactly which sign, what the sign would say. So we'll work with Street Works Superintendent Darryl Bisgarden which type of sign it'll be exactly where it'll be placed. So we'll bring that back at future meeting. The only other item on our agenda was, we heard from, Terry Baker came in from the Wayfinding Commission and spoke about restoring three blocks of Broadway and three blocks of Court Street downtown from one-way back to two-way. So the presentation had kind of a historical component in the first section, and the second section was more, what are the benefits of doing so? And the third was just, what is the actual proposal? How much does it cost? Where does the funding come from? So that presentation, it's a PowerPoint, will be up on the city's website by tomorrow, so anybody can share it. And the idea is then to get public feedback between now and November 12th. It's our first council meeting in November, and that's when we have to decide. So just a reminder, we had $150,000 slot in our capital improvement projects for some sort of street project this fiscal year. This came in at just under $75,000, so a little under half of that for this. Whatever we end up doing with it, we have to decide by November, so we can plan and get something constructed, because the money has to be spent this fiscal year. So if we spent about half of that $150 on this, it'd still be about $75,000 for, I'll try to spare poor Darryl from what the feedback people have been saying, fill potholes with that money. But some sort of basic street repair work could be, could be, oh, what's that called? The spray? Help me out, Mel.
Seal coat?
Seal coating.
Seal coating. We can always do a little more seal coating. It's not a lot of money to work with. I think that's the one thing the public sometimes, and how would you know? Like, how far does $150,000 go? Not even a block of reconstruction, not even really a block of overlay.
Well, no, you get about four blocks of overlay. Four or five blocks of overlay.
But we don't have a lot of streets to overlay. We have a lot of streets that need reconstructing. So we'll bring this back again November, we'll vote. But feel free to take a look at the presentation, just kind of answer some questions about it and such. You'll probably be getting emails, if you haven't already, from members of the public expressing their views on this. That's all.
Thank you. Next, counsel, we'll move to our Administration Department reports. Aaron.
If you saw my memo that I put out with the council packet, Mayor and I had looked at some of the revenue that we spent, or expenditures that we spent with Alliant Energy, and then the proposed rate increase that they're going to have of 7.5%, and that's a pretty significant dollar amount to, for the city to continue to eat if they continue to put those types of rate increases in place. So we're requesting to be able to send a letter and/or present to the board?
Iowa Utilities Board, what happens at the hearing, I think, on October 6th and 7th, where this issue will be heard. I had heard from gentlemen in Decora and forwarded the ordinance that their city passed, basically, you know, against the rate increase. And we've been so involved with other issues with Alliant, smart meters, and downtown light poles, that I think we've kind of skipped over the fact that, you know, these increases have an impact on our budgets as well, fairly significant, so.
So we're requesting approval by the council to object to the rate increase by either appearance or by letter.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Hallie, second by Anderson. Any discussion, counsel? Anyone have any feelings on that?
That's great. I'm glad you're doing it.
Yeah. I saw that the City of Etomo had done this, and was almost going to recommend it, so I'm really glad you guys beat me to it.
Right. And it's not coming to you in an ordinance form, so we'll just prepare a letter. Okay? Okay. Do we have a motion to second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Aaron.
Another update, downtown street lighting project. I had a, met correspondence with Tim Wizer, the project manager from Alliant. The project is moving forward. They are working with some of the painting of some of the materials right now. Also have to do some more work with the DOT, which will require some more city correspondence. He's going to send me that information here this week. He is on vacation today, I think, or at least out of the office. So that's the update for the downtown streetlight project. Continuing to work with Travis Squires, I spoke with him today. He doesn't have all the information as far as our city financing to utilize the money that we have on hand to better suit the taxpayers. We'll be, actually, when I'm at the League of Cities, I'll have a meeting with him to work more on that. Been working with Josh Larrabee on some economic development stuff, dealing with how to better serve some of our larger businesses here in the community. Also working on a TIF project for the new industrial park, as the new industrial park is not in a TIF area, so we don't, we can't give some of those incentives in that area as TIF projects. So working with that, with Josh and with Hollers and Cooney on those things. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you, Aaron. Appreciate it. Next, we have a project report from our city engineer, Melanie.
So the best part of the report is that two of these items are going to be coming off by next month, since we have closed out the Step One project. As far as wastewater, the one thing I'd like to bring to your attention is, the wastewater treatment plant is at a stage where we're moving from the old equipment to the new equipment. Because of our treatment process, this is a very sensitive time for the treatment plant. The city is going to be hiring a consultant to help the wastewater treatment plant staff monitor the biological workings of the plant while we make this change. The reason I bring it up to you is that sometimes, in these cases, the city might not meet their effluent requirements. And if you would see a press release or something like that that would say, you know, we didn't meet the effluent requirements, it's likely because of this transition time. But with having the consultant, we're hoping we can keep an eye on everything and not have that issue, but I wanted to bring it up in case you do hear about it before the next council meeting.
Hey, Melanie, what are we talking about? A day or two?
Yeah, a day or two. I mean, worst-case scenario is you kill off all the bugs, and it takes 30 days to get everything back up. But there are provisions in the contract that if it would be a long period of time, the contractor has fault in that case as well. But again, that's, we're going to monitor it very closely.
And do we need a consultant, given the fact that we have, you know, an engineering firm?
This is more of a, this is beyond their expertise. This is monitoring the percent of certain bugs and things that I can't even really explain. Aaron was at that meeting. It's going to make Sean feel a lot more comfortable.
Chemistry. Yes, I would say it's actually, it's chemistry, it's science. It's not engineering, it's science.
The biology expertise is needed to do that, yeah.
Okay.
Ouch.
Yeah.
It's real science.
All right. Moving, so moving on. On the Highway One project, we are continuing the data gathering stage and schematic design, so I wanted to remind the council of the work session on October 21st at 5:30, where Shav Harry will be presenting their findings, including their traffic study. Down to the bottom, the second page, we have a water main on Stone and Eighth Street. They were scheduled to start this week. They have not started this week. Again, contractors are very busy, and I'm expecting that they're behind schedule elsewhere and have not moved into Fairfield at this time. On Petrus Park, there's been, we did release something to the Facebook page and was on the media, but we did find that there was 2% asbestos in the tile that's below the terrazzo, so the terrazzo is the top layer. And then there was asbestos-containing material underneath there. We do have to remove a portion of it in order to install the irrigation lines. There's no place we can install the irrigation lines other than above ground that wouldn't require the removal of the asbestos-containing material. So that removal is scheduled for the end of this week, and then at that point, the contractor should have a clear sight to be able to continue with the work as planned. But that's really why we've seen a stop in work there for the last month, between getting the test results and now waiting for the approval to abate that. We're also starting to see movement on the Carnegie elevator project. We've received drawings and specifications from Schumacher that myself and the Carnegie Foundation will be looking at. Our goal is to do the elevator work while Indian Hills is on winter break, and right now, that still seems to be feasible. And then a new project that's kind of popped up here, again, it was out on the media this week, but city crews are installing a new storm sewer on Washington Avenue from Fourth to Fifth, and then it will go down Fifth Street and connect to Adams. So Washington from Fourth to Fifth is currently closed. One side of the street has access through the alley, the other side of the street has access to their drives, but the through-traffic is closed. And then lastly, just because there's been a lot of talk on Facebook about streets and street improvements, and one question that I've gotten a lot of is, why are we not retaping or restriping Burlington? A lot of people are noticing that those are faded. At the next council meeting, we're going to have an engineering services agreement from French Rennecker. We've asked them to update a capital improvements plan for the city specifically related to the streets. We do this on a macro level for all the city projects, but we want them to look at a few projects in more detail, specifically Burlington. Burlington is due for an overlay, so if we're going to be able to do Burlington in a couple years, there's no reason to spend money on retaping it now if we're going to do it in two years. So we are, I don't have an answer when we are going to do that, but I want to let you know that we are aware Burlington needs retaped. And then this CIP that French will be doing, we'll be looking at that among, along with all the other roads. But Burlington is one that I've seen talked about a lot lately, so we'll bring that to the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mel. Any questions, counsel? Okay, appreciate the report. Counsel, if there is any other business that takes us to the end of our agenda, I entertain a motion to approve. 移到 adjourn.
Still moved.
Moved by Toohill.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.